Twenty twenty-three Twalton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting into session. And we'll go ahead, start off with the pledge allegiance tonight led by Octavio, our councillor Gonzalez. All right, thank you councillor Gonzalez. Our first item under announcements is the Twalton Science and Technology Scholarship Award today led by councillor Hillier.
Thank you very much. We welcome up Kelly and her dad Miguel. No, your dad's gonna stay back.
I'll stay back there.
Okay. Need to start? Okay, we didn't, we didn't practice. We're just so happy to have you here, Kelly. And such a great audience to get to see how incredibly bright the future really is with people like you in it, Kelly. All right, twenty twenty-three Twalton Science and Technology Scholarship winner. It is my pleasure and honor to announce the Twalton Science and Technology Scholarship winner for the twenty twenty-three school year. This year, the city is awarding one one thousand dollar scholarship. The scholarship recipient is Kelly Tejada Casalanos. Choosing one student to receive a scholarship was very difficult because each of the students who applied were outstanding. Not only did each one have impressive grades, but they had also been involved in many kinds of extracurricular activities and volunteer work in the community. It was inspiring to see the applications of so many intelligent, hardworking and community oriented young people who live here in Twalton, truly, truly. Kelly lives with her uncle Miguel in Twalton and just graduated from Twalton High School. She was born in the United States. Kelly spent most of her life in Mexico, returning to America after the COVID nineteen pandemic impacted her education. At Twalton High School, she completed her coursework while simultaneously learning English. Kelly's vision is to become a high school physics teacher. Can you imagine? Isn't that inspiring, right? She cites being inspired by her Twalton physics teacher, Mr. Chris Murray. If you know Mr. Murray, you know that that is a very likely thing. In her scholarship application, Kelly said that she wants to teach future students, particularly those who speak a language other than English, how to analyze and solve problems in a fun, engaging and empathetic way, right? We all know physics to be empathetic. Kelly's letters of recommendation described her as inquisitive, compassionate, driven and intelligent. A student who loves learning and who loves helping others. Kelly was a member of the Language and Culture Club at Twalton High School, serving as a teacher's assistant, teaching assistant. At the school she previously attended in Mexico, Kelly participated in dance club and volleyball club. She has also been active in community volunteerism, including participating in the Interact Club of Mexico. She wants to study physics at Oregon State University and will be the first in her family to attend college. I shouldn't say go ducks right there, huh? The scholarship committee consists of myself, councillor Saco representing the, for the council. Bunko Camus of Pacific Metal Company, representing the Twalton Chamber of Commerce, and director Jill Zerschmid, representing the Tiger Twalton School Board. The criteria considered in selecting scholarship recipients include academic standing, field of study, extracurricular activities and community activities. We are happy and honored to recognize Kelly's many achievements and are pleased to be able to help her reach her academic goals. Congratulations.
And Kelly has a few words she'd like to say, if that'd be okay.
Yeah, I just, I wanna say thank you for this opportunity, but also for your patience, because as you know, I went to Corvallis to attend my orientation at Oregon State and we just get here and, you know, I think in overtime. And yeah, just I'm gonna read something if you want. Yeah, okay. I'm gonna say I'm honored to be one of the recipients of this year and of the Twalton Science and Technology Scholarship. And I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank each of you and for helping make it possible for me to achieve my goal of going to college. And your contribution to my education is generous and much appreciated for me. And thanks for your donation, I'm able to continue to focus on my studies. And I hope that one day I will be able to give something back to those who have assisted me to achieve my dreams. And as you know, I'm still learning English and I hope, you know, get a good level in that. And yeah, just I'm gonna say thank you and I doing my best.
Congratulations. I know Maggie, Maggie wants to do a photo, so I'll, councillor Hill, you go out front here, I'll group back here.
We actually have everybody spread out so they're on the other side of the three in the front.
Oh.
Yeah, to move this way. A little bit further, councillor president. There we go. All right. Mayor, could you move just this way a little bit? Perfect, thanks.
All right. Best wishes in Corvallis. I struggle, I struggle with physics, so more power to you. Okay, that brings us to item number two in announcements, the Twalton Community Emergency Response Team. Otherwise known as CERT, Emergency Preparedness Fair. I think this is Kathy.
Good evening. Are we on?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Madam President, council members. I'm very pleased to be here tonight in the announcement section. As a Beaver, I'm lost. I couldn't be happier to follow this very, very outstanding high school student who's going to my school. And I think she'll do us proud, so congratulations to her. Tonight, we're gonna give you an overview of our August fifth emergency fair. Tonight's presenter is Heather Slotter. She's the director of our membership. Heather is a recent resident of Twalton, but she's hit the ground running. She's in the Midwest CIO and she is also on our board. And all of the creative stuff came from others and a lot of it came from Heather. So Heather, you're on, go for it.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you all for having us here tonight. And we have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you. So I'm Heather. Thank you for the nice introduction. And really been enjoying my short time in Twalton and joined CERT last year and then, yeah, thank you.
But there's millions watching on channel twenty-eight.
The pressure's on. And then I found out that we're having this emergency preparedness fair and they asked me to help out with marketing. And so I've been kind of doing a little bit of work and we got the brochures and everything updated in English and in Spanish for CERT. And then we started creating ads and everything for the emergency fair, which is August fifth. And we have a new logo and a new cute little bee mascot. And he's got his little CERT helmet on and his glasses and everything. And so we've been pasting this guy everywhere we go. And we also have been working with Michael over at Twalton Life and we created this ad with a lot of his help here. And we are working on hanging up these around town and putting them at the library and Starbucks and Fred Meyer and whoever else will let us hang it up. And it's got a list of all the exhibitors and so forth. And we also have had two articles written about the fair. Well, one's coming on July and one came out last month, so maybe you, maybe you caught it already. And then here are the details, so it'll be on a Saturday from eleven to three. The admission is free. We have lots of giveaways and prizes, including we're going to hand out two hundred little go bags. Probably to kids mostly, but it'll be a little drawstring backpack with the little bee logo on it. And then as they troop around the fair, they're gonna be able to go and visit all the booths and pick up little fun items like, you know, pens and flashlights and whistles and so forth. And in fact, we've got the Twalton neighborhood ready. People are gonna do some little whistles with the bees and then some other people are gonna be handing out flashlights with bees. And then to make it extra fun, we're gonna do like a little passport adventure for them. So each booth they go to, they get a little sticker. And then it's also trying to encourage them to go and visit lots of people, because we, we have the city of Twalton plus rest, fire, rescue and police and utilities and everybody. So maybe some of them, they wouldn't be all that excited about. But now they get a sticker and at the end, when they come back, they'll get a helmet as their prize. That's gonna have the twelve to be on it. So we're gonna have all these cute little kids running around with whistles.
We're gonna give them puppies too.
Baby puppies and a lot of sugar because Kona Ice is gonna be there handing out snow cones. So it's gonna be super fun, so.
Just joking about the puppies.
No puppies. But I think at this point, we have more than thirty-five exhibitors and expert speakers will be going on the whole time at the Wanita Pole Center. And all the information is very graciously updated by Kathy on the website. The American Red Cross is gonna be doing their Pillowcase Project, which is really amazing. It was a little bit tough to get them out, but we figured out how to make it work. And we've got, they're actually giving out these pillowcases and they're super heavy duty. And they teach kids from grades three to five about how to be prepared and to make their own little go bag. They get to go home with this and it's something they can keep under their bed with their favorite stuffed animal and some snacks and a flashlight. It should be really great. And a helmet and a whistle.
No puppy.
This is the little passport adventure where we've, it's gonna, it's the bee theme again, so it's going through the hive. Is going to visit all the exhibitors and get their little stickers to get their prize at the end. Oh, and we also created a QR code so people that are younger than us can use their phones. Scan it and go right to the website. So here are some of the exhibitors. We have some big ones like Costco and Mud Bay. Mud Bay's gonna be handing out little snacks and talking about how to get prepared for your animals if there was a disaster, what you should do. And we've got Ghost State Kits is gonna be doing a raffle and giving away some go bags. We've got the ham radio team out with their solar powered radio station and antennas. And so they'll be doing little demonstrations on how to use the walkie talkies. And a lot of utilities and then we've got local businesses as well. So we're really excited to be able to support some of them and they're gonna be all handing out really cool little goodies to put in the go bags as, as people go around. And oh, and Kona Ice too. We've got the Kona Ice truck is gonna be there. And then these are the speakers. There's BJ Cure is gonna be out talking about how to get your house quake proof. And so he does assessments and then gives people ideas about what they can do to improve their own home. American Red Cross will also be doing a workshop for adults and teens, followed by the Pillowcase Project for the little kids at the end. And this will all be in the Wanita Pole and these are seating is limited, so we need people to sign up ahead of time to reserve a seat. Because I think it's twenty-five, twenty-five. We've got yard signs. We're gonna start hanging up around the neighborhood, so you're gonna see those popping up because we're getting them tomorrow. And Kathy and her buddy with a drill will be out, maybe in your neighborhood. Give them a wave. And then we've also got a big banner coming that's gonna be hung up at that intersection with Martin Azee. And we'll hang that up a week before the fair, so we can encourage everybody to come out and we hope you all come out. And we really appreciate all the help that the city has been giving us to make this actually possible. So we're really excited, really excited.
Yeah, this is so understated. Lindsay Marshall has been wonderful. City of Twalton's been wonderful. The Parks people have been wonderful. Julie and Heidi have been wonderful. But the whole bee concept came from Twalton being a bee city. And so we grabbed onto your bee and she gave it a flashlight and safety glasses and a helmet. So we wanna, wanna thank, thank you. We would really appreciate it as our elected officials, if you're in town on August fifth, that's a Saturday. If you could come by, that would be a very nice thing. I know it's a busy time of year, but.
Bring your kids.
Or puppies. No.
Yeah.
Kidding, puppies. I'll tell you, we're gonna have a lot of kids. Whistles are very important for safety. That's part of what we teach kids is have a whistle, so if you need help, you can whistle. But I don't think that's why they're gonna be whistling on Saturday.
Probably not, no.
Yeah. Anyway, so thank you to the city of Twalton and the city staff. They've been fantastic.
Thank you much.
Questions for the cert folks?
I wanna say thank you very much for putting this together. This is very well organized, put together. I'm definitely gonna post this in our community website at the Fox Hills and hopefully we can get a good attendance, because this looks to be a lot of fun. And with current times, this is very relevant specifically right now. So thank you so much for putting this together. I'll definitely will be there with my family as well.
Great. And I can get more posters and flyers too, if any of you wanna hand them out somewhere, so just let me know.
Will you be able to distribute some in Spanish?
I, yeah, we have, we do, we have.
We got our brochure printed in Spanish and we have the same little flyers, this, this one in Spanish as well. We'll be handing it out at Viva Twalton.
Viva Twalton.
Next week.
We'll have a booth there again, thanks to the city.
All right. Anything else? Present.
Just really quick, thank you for all the work. I know it's all volunteer work and it's so important to help people be ready for the inevitable. So thank you.
Well, thank you both for coming tonight and this looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun. I'm gonna be out of town unfortunately, so.
Yeah, it's a busy time.
Yeah, well, we're hoping to have this more than just this one time, maybe a year or frequently.
Yeah, we, we've spent a lot on signs and.
Gotta reuse them.
Well, we've already, you know, discussed how we could cover up the date and, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you all.
All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here who elected us to council, this would be the appropriate time. I do have some folks signed up. I'm gonna start with, is there anybody in Zoom that is public comment, right? So we'll start with the signups and first up is Mr. Drangsholt. Welcome.
I think you might recognize me from about a month ago.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President and councillors, thank you for the time. I have five people in support of what I'm about to talk about. And I don't know if you're aware, but over twenty-five restaurant organizations have closed in Washington County and Clackamas County this year. It's still affecting the industry. It's affecting those that also are music venues. Half the music venues in Portland area have closed. And that was since the pandemic started. We're all looking for ways to earn more income and support the overhead that we have in our buildings. I did send you an email with three panels of where I'm talking about putting pickleball courts. And if you would like to see a close up of this, I'd be more than happy to hand it to you. About a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, on a Monday night, we held what we call the Pickleball Social to see who would be interested in having us build courts behind our very unique location. And I'm here with a petition that over forty-five people on a Monday came in and signed that said, we would really like to have pickleball at your location. And I think that I could probably get seven hundred people here at the council meeting. Let's not do that. I would like to see if it's possible for the council to help us get it okayed in the zone that we're in and in the unique location that we have behind our building. And behind our building is also train tracks and bushes and over four football fields away from the nearest residential area. So the noise is not going to be an issue. The building owner has okayed us to do this renovation, if you guys okay it. And I have support of a financial person that will be willing to do it and put it in for the good of the nation, if they will, you know. It's very important for the community. It's very important for surrounding businesses who will have increases in gas consumption. Again, space age right across the street, you know, you know how that builds. And then I'll be able to support my staff by additional hours of labor, because we'll be able to open up at eight o'clock in the morning when a lot of these pickleballers wanna come in and play. We're not gonna be tournament wise, because you don't have two courts. We wanna add two courts and become a tournament. That's not enough, but it will be for very social and communal gatherings. And I think it's a real benefit to Twalton to attract this population. And I ask for your support. I hope that you all can see that we're genuine and that we wanna do it. And it also helps Suzanne get more permits. So I don't wanna take up a lot of your time. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And thank you. I appreciate your work very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jamie Draxholt.
They just donated their time.
Oh, donated, okay.
And I, so I'm not gonna sit here for fifteen minutes and, and tell you about it. I'm just asking for, I believe I, I need at least four of you in support to do so, to move forward. I ask for your vote.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll circle back to this during, after, we don't debate it during, on it, we can talk about it later tonight, after the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Oh, there's more, okay. With Jamie, so. Eric, all right, come on up, Eric.
I would also hear.
Yep. Yeah, talk on the mic.
Oh, sorry about that. Hi, thanks. I'm Eric Two Rivers. I'm essentially the music director at, at the garages. I just have a question and I don't want it to come off smart alecky or anything. I'm just asking seriously, what more do we need to do to win you over to this idea? So that's, that's my question to you tonight for you to talk about later. And I believe that you know how to get ahold of us through Kent and stuff. And so that's, that's it. I see it as a win-win for the whole community. It's gonna be fun. You all are invited to come and partake too.
All right, thanks. Sure. All right, do we have anyone else who'd like to come on up, sir?
Good evening. I'm Tom Witten. I'm the president of the Northwest Pickleball Veterans. We're a group of military veterans and established for eleven years now. We travel the West Coast converting old tennis courts and other types of sporting areas into pickleball courts. We've done ninety-three projects since two thousand fifteen. I was the leader of the fundraising committee to raise the money to put the lights on Twalton Park. I also personally paid to stripe the original courts there. I bought all of the equipment and the nets that they're now enjoying, not only at Twalton Park, but at Jergens Park. We also painted the lines up at Ibeck Park. So one of the things we've been involved in the last couple of years is converting indoor facilities like church gyms and now warehouses. We converted the Best Buy up in Bellingham to nine pickleball courts and it's a private pickleball club there. This is a big trend. First of all, it rains a lot here, so you need an indoor place to play. Outdoors and the, and the parks is nice and for about five months, for the rest of the time, you need a warm indoor place to play. And so there's been a bunch of that stuff happened in the last six months. Some bowling alley on Eighty Second, a warehouse up in Oregon City. There's another job coming up in West Lynn. We converted nine church gyms and basements into indoor pickleball clubs. And these make a lot of money for the, the churches and the schools. Though my own church, Church of the Resurrection, just built a gym and be pickleball courts there. And these are a nice fun fundraising thing. And it really addresses a big problem is what our city is doing for senior citizens in terms of sports. Plenty of Little League and soccer and things of that nature. What are you doing for senior citizens? The vast majority of pickleball players are senior citizens. I'm pushing eighty, but I'm still fairly competitive. So it's something you can do till you just about can't stand up anymore. And if you drove up here, you probably went by Twalton Park. There's fifty-eight people out there playing pickleball right now, so we need more places. Jergens is filled a lot of times with the people playing when there's not room here. And now we go up to Ibeck Park. I sell portable nets to people, so they can take them to other places and, and play too. I also did the pickleball dink courts at the garages for Kent as means of promoting that. We have around eighty-five military veterans up and down the West Coast that come to our work parties, volunteer their time to make these things happen. So I mentioned, we painted the lines over at Twalton Park. But we also raised forty-seven hundred dollars to put the lighting on the courts there. And that's out of our pocket to support pickleball. We've got a wonderful chance here to support another local indoor place. You already have three outdoor pickleball venues in Twalton. You have pickleball going on already indoors at the Bay Club. And we used to play pickleball at twenty-four hour fitness across the street from the garages. But there's plenty of precedents for this event. I think it's about time to kinda say, let's get behind this and help out Mr. Andranghors and help out the senior citizens. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, those items are considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of only three items versus our last meeting. It was like eleven or twelve. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Item two, consideration of resolution five seven one four dash twenty-three, ordering a contract for Stone Ridge Park construction documents and professional services to Pacific Community Design. And finally, item number three, consideration of resolution number five seven one six dash twenty-three, awarding the contract for construction to Boone Story Corridor Phase Two improvements part of the Twalton Moving Forward Program. Renee, council would like an item removed.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to special reports. Item number one, the annual report of the Twalton Historical Society. Mr. Baker.
Oh, following bees and pickleball, it's not gonna be easy.
A future physics teacher too.
And a future, yeah, that was amazing, right? She's cool. Thank you, Mayor, Madam President, City Council, City Manager, Lumbos. I see that a director of our library is here too, so all kinds of important people, Julie also. But mine, for me, most important. Okay, we're gonna run through this rather quickly. Please don't hesitate to stop me if there's a question you have, okay? We finally this year have the pandemic in our rearview and I, I, Mayor, and I, and I say that because all of our meetings have been in person now. And I, I, Mayor, and I, and I say that because all of our meetings have been in person now. And that includes finally in the fall, our Ice Age meetings, which are historically on Thursday evenings, the third Thursday evening every month. They too went to in-person. Our rentals have picked up. Bad news, we lost Weight Watchers, but we have a lot of other rentals that are picking up the pace. And when you see our financials, I think you'll agree, we're in good shape there. We have about four hundred to five hundred visitors per month at the Heritage Center. And we have all kinds of things going on with regard to the garden. The oral histories continue. We do about two a quarter, I would like to say every month, but sometimes we skip a month. Mike Lofton from DigiPics does those for us, so kudos to him. We've become more and more focused on our events, and I have a special slide on that. And I'll talk about fabrics of our lives a little bit later, because that was one of our better programs of the year. And we're also proud to host cost-free Tuolton together, because that's a very important part of our community. And the other thing I'm gonna brag about in addition to the quilt show was that finally. History Day started again for our fourth graders. We renamed it, and I'll talk about that. We don't call it Pioneer Days anymore. There's an interim name, and I'll explain that in just a second. Here's a list of all the things that we did on the art scene this year. I'm not going to go through them. We're proud of them. Many of them were done cost-free for the performer. And some of them were done on a share, whatever we get at the door cost, to make sure that the. Mask and Mirrors or Wilsonville Players, that they made some money too, as well as us. So it was a win-win situation for us. There's a picture of our historian, Sandra Lafkey Carlson. Special shout out to her and to Fabric of Our Lives, which was our quilt show. I ran into a lady at my dentist this morning who had actually been to the quilt show. We're really, really proud of it, and it's gonna become an annual event. And look out for it in the spring and come and enjoy. These are all local quilts, and we had a speaker from Portland State University and a lady out of Canby. And it was great, it was just fantastic. Pioneer Day is now at least, for the meantime, History Day. Why? Because we added three things that really don't fold into what you might consider to be pioneer. We had someone speaking about Ice Age, all the eratics that we have on site. We had a speaker there for the kids, a learning module about the native peoples and also the native plants. So we don't know what we're gonna call it in the future, but at least for this year, we just called it History Day. Because it goes beyond just the pioneers, and we're very proud about that transition that we're making to include those learning modules. Also, hats off to Jackie Conan for getting us volunteers. We desperately needed them. We had our own members doing it, but she brought us an additional seven or eight that brought us over the top. Of the people, we really needed to staff those sites and make sure that those fourth graders had a great experience. Mary Rennenbaum, she came to us out of the blue, taught internationally, has all kinds of credentials, working with elementary's. Kids from the United States to Singapore to Germany, all over the world, largely in military installations. But she brought a special focus to us that we didn't have before. And guess what was, in my opinion, the kids didn't get to do a survey, but. That one-room schoolhouse was a total hit. Who would have thought that fourth graders sitting in front of a school marm that told them not to cross their legs? That told them to be quiet. She separated the boys from the girls, they could only sit down when they were told. They were chided when they picked up their slates too early. And I'm thinking, these are kids that all have iPhones, probably. And the kids love this. It was, it was crazy, but she taught them all kinds of cool things in the one-room schoolhouse that we had there. One of the eight total learning modules that we had, and I had to make sure that I pointed out that. Kids, maybe kids, but maybe you don't know kids as you think you do. Our financials, this is in the report, if anybody wants to look at it in detail. The bottom line is that our membership dropped. Again, second year in a row, that was a disappointment. We're working on that. We have a new membership person who's gonna be helping us. We also have a new volunteer coordinator who's gonna be helping us. And anybody who's in a nonprofit here knows that these volunteers are like gold. And so we have bright hopes for the future. But when it comes to financials, at least through May, and our fiscal year follows the city. We were below budget in terms of our cost, and we were above budget in terms of revenue. And I was unable to provide this in time, but that's how we finished the year also. And so financially, we're in great shape. We are really proud of our programming. We have one a month during the day, first Wednesday of every month at one o'clock at the Heritage Center. And then the third Thursday in the evening also at the Heritage Center typically, although that does come to the library sometimes. And we are grateful that we have TVCTV in our. In our corner, and they love to come and to film our programs. And we get those, and we put them on our YouTube channel. Yes, the Historical Society has a YouTube channel. And we also put them on our webpage. And so we are actually preserving these events for our archives and. Or our mission statement for our organization. And there's some examples of what we did at the bottom there. We're always proud to celebrate who we are. You can go to the tuoltonhistory.org. At the top, there's a dropdown menu, pick Learn, and then select Celebrate, and you'll find these people and you'll learn more about them. And why they won the, either the Lafkey Martinazzi Award, or why they won the President's Award. In short, the Lafkey Martinazzi Award, those people who best supported our mission statement and the President's Award. Are for those people who helped get our word out to the community. So read more about these people on our webpage. Here's a young lady, Adwati Al Hawani. You can read more about her also on our webpage, tuoltonhistory.org. Select Learn at the top and go down to Celebrate, and you'll find out why she was selected by. The Historical Society to win the Jack Broome Scholarship. Very impressive young lady. Immigrated here from Iraq, learned Spanish, of course, English, and has a lot of other things going on for her, and we're very proud of that. So this is the second to the last foil. This is some unfinished business, things we haven't accomplished that we wanted to. And I'm only gonna focus on three things, only two of them are listed on there. One is, we have this Galbraith Farm Wagon, which was actually restored using a wainwright. If you don't know what a wainwright is, it's basically a person who knows how to historically accurately recover wagons. And this gentleman is one of two people in the Northwest. He happened to be out in the Dayton area, the other one's in Idaho, so we picked him. And right now, it's at Lee's Farm, it was on display for a while, and it's in storage now. We have had conversations with the city, and they did find a place for us. They were very, the city was very cooperative. Unfortunately, the cost for the shelter, which we had budgeted, didn't meet the city standards for shelters. And so we had to go to another plan, and that dialogue is still going, going on. So we want to show this farm wagon, which has been with families that you know, like the Lee family, for example. There's the Galbraith family, obviously, because that's what the wagon's named after. Down at the bottom of that list is there is a propeller that is available to us, will be donated to us. That was from the plane crash, military airplane that happened in nineteen fifty-two. And that propeller is available to us. We think it would make a really cool display outside, it's aluminum, so it won't rust, at the Heritage Center. We haven't even begun discussions with this yet, with Ross at the parks. But there's something new that came up too, very recently. At the Lake of the Commons, there is. A water fountain that's the theme for Ice Age. And it looks like a bunch of ice blocks stacked on top of each other. And because it was put there in nineteen ninety-seven, a lot of the parts and stuff, and as the city starts to renovate. There for the Veterans Memorial and other things. It's just not practical to fit in anymore. But we would love to have that, functioning or not, over at the Heritage Center, including the plaque that's there on the ground. Right now, there's some chain wire fence around it, you can still see it there. But we want to move that to the Heritage Center to continue to recognize those people that have. That funded not only that, but continue to fund efforts Ice Age related in the city, which is important. So those are the three things, two of them are on the list, that might be of interest to the city. And then there's all the other things that we're doing. Last slide is of course us, the board and our manager, Rick Wheelock. If you haven't met him, pop into the Heritage Center. He's a treasure unto himself. And I know it's not as good as bees or physics or pickleball, but that's what we've been up to. Any questions?
Questions for Ross?
Julie, does this come against my time?
Uh, what? Oh, no, I just wanted to say I've worked with Rick a little bit, and he's just wonderful.
He's sweetheart. Yeah.
Other questions? No, I think you're doing a great job, Ross. You keep signing up to be the president of the year after year, which I give you credit for, because back when I was on the board, you had some challenges. You know, it's a tough board to work with, but they're totally devoted, but they're very opinionated folks.
They are, they are. And my thirty years at a German company did nothing to train me to work with the octogenarians that I'm working with now, but I love them all.
Yep, they're super devoted.
They are, I love them.
And then the one, I've been to Mask and Mirror performances in the building, and it works, it works.
It works, it's great. Keep your eye out, go to our webpage and look at our calendar, it's right on the homepage, and see what we have, what programs we have coming up. There's a show on right now, and ten bucks, whatever it is to get in, and you see a great show. And.
You want to promote your event in September? Give a plug?
What's happening in September?
The annual.
Oh, the, oh, yeah. On the, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, Mayor. On the, on the eighth, on Friday, the eighth of September, we have our annual, our only fundraiser of the year, actually. And it is our Heritage Evening. And we, last couple of years, we had Tom Swearingen, Oregon, he's won Western Cowboy Poetry of all kinds of awards. This year, we're changing it up a little bit, and we have a local guy who is going to be, he is an author. And also writes for wine, remember the name of the, what's the most prestigious wine magazine?
Wine Spectator?
Wine Spectator, and also The Oregonian. And his, his name is Alberti, and he will be speaking about wines that are, are great wines in the Willamette Valley. And he'll also be donating a lot of wines for our Wine of Wall. And we'll have our auction as we normally do, not very many items, only five or six things, but just enough to have fun. And we'll have a nice food spread and wine right on the patio there at the Heritage Center on Friday. The eighth of September, so come out and support us if you can.
He's still doing tickets plus the fifty-fifty.
We'll have a raffle, yeah, yeah. And we'll be doing, we'll be selling the gift cards at face value for a lot of the local businesses and stuff. So it's, we'll, we'll be. Selling stuff, we'll be raising money that night. So, so your ticket into the event is probably only the beginning of us getting into your wallet.
All right, anything else for Ross?
Thank you, guys, for supporting us and to continue your help. Especially the interfaces we have with the city are very rewarding, and we enjoy them. Okay?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that brings us to the Tuolton Planning Commission Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. I also serve as the liaison for staff to the Tuolton Planning Commission. With me is Janelle Thompson, our Planning Commission Vice Chair. And we're here to present the Tuolton Planning Commission Annual Report for two thousand twenty-two.
He's probably gonna raffle that off.
On our first slide, we have your planning commissioners, Bill Beer, Beer's our chair, could not be here tonight, but sends his regrets. Janelle Thompson seated next to me, our vice chair, Daniel Bachhuber, who's pictured on the right. And then we have Ursula Kuhn in the picture, Randall Lettich, who is also in the picture, and Zach Wimmer, who's in the picture. Brittany Valley was not in the picture. It's worth noting that two thousand twenty-two was our first year since the pandemic that we're meeting in person. And so this is our first picture in a long time. And of course, we couldn't have schedules aligned to get a picture at all in two thousand twenty-two where each person was there, so. Just a little bit of background, as you all probably know by now, but it's worth repeating. That the role of the Planning Commission first and foremost is to satisfy. Tuolton's responsibilities under Oregon statewide planning goal number one. If you'll remember back to our Planning one-on-one discussion, that's citizen involvement. And as the goal number one is the most important goal of the statewide planning program. Specific to Tuolton, the Tuolton Planning Commission serves as an advisory committee to the city council on land use matters and a variety of other related matters. They review and make recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments and other such matters. You have one here before you tonight, the Water Master Plan. The Planning Commission also serves as a hearing body, making approvals or denials on quasi judicially induced decisions, conditional use permits, variances, and industrial master plans. Two thousand twenty-two was, in some ways, a relatively quiet year for the Tuolton Planning Commission. The Planning Commission only made one recommendation to the city council on the core area investment plan. That was unanimous, seven to zero in favor of the plan, finding it to be in conformance of the Tuolton Community Plan or Comprehensive Plan. And then one sole action item for two thousand twenty-two, the Liam Industrial Master Plan, which facilitated. Changes to Liam's previously approved industrial master plan, allowing them to continue to build out in furtherance of their long-held plans. And although we only had one recommendation, one formal action item, we kept the Planning Commission busy with a lot of interaction. Discussion questions and answered on a variety of different topic areas. Those include the Basalt Creek Employment Zoning Code update, which we'll come back to you later this summer. We had discussion around implementation of the city's housing production strategy and the lead into the Equitable Housing Finance Plan. We had some discussions, which staff will return to council at some point soon to discuss further. So the development code update to meet legal requirements around clear and objective requirements specific to housing and residential development. As I noted earlier, we had early discussions and conversations about the Water Master Plan, which. In two thousand twenty-three, Planning Commission made the ultimate recommendation on. And then we had an informal, excuse me, informational presentation from Rich and Ross on the city's Parks Bond, which was very exciting and informative. And then, last but not least, an update on where the city stands in relation to its climate-friendly and equitable communities' responsibilities under those rules. Anything you want to add, Janelle?
No, I think that's great, yeah.
And with that, we thank you for your time and are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Janelle and/or?
I just, I wanted to thank you for your contribution to the community. And I know without this committee, that there's. Our city council meetings, it's the same one, right? Where the city council meetings would go on for a very long time. So I think it's really important work, and it helps, it really helps me. Be more informed on my decision-making, and so I just, I know they're not always easy discussions and not always the easiest place to put yourself, insert yourself. As in community conversations, there's a lot easier places to do that. So I just wanted to thank you and the rest of the committee for all of your dedication, and thank you, Steve, for your leadership on the, on the committee.
Other questions or comments? I just echo Council Brooks's thoughts that this is a big. I just echo Council Brooks thoughts that this is a big commitment. This is, you know, this is one of those committees where it's not always a fun thing to be on. Put you close in line with city council decisions and we very much validate. I should say, I very much appreciate the opinions that come from the Plan Commission when we have to make the final decision. Because you know, you guys are putting just much effort in as we are. But you hear it first, you get to ask all the questions and better inform us when it gets to our decision. I very much appreciate that. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the public hearing for tonight, which is consideration of the 2023 Water Master Plan Update, including updated system development charge or SDC methodology and recent corresponding plan text and map amendments to the Twelton Comprehensive Plan Development Code. And this will be Aaron and Nick starting off at least.
Yes. All right.
Welcome.
Is this close enough, Nicole?
No, closer, closer.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you all. Tonight, we're here for you to consider the Water Master Plan and the proposed SDC and rate updates as the mayor had just identified. I'm joined by Aaron Inman, Senior Planner in our planning group, who has helped me through the Plan Commission process and get the project to this point. Zach Hazel is with FCS. They did the financial analysis for the plan. And then we have John, Zach's colleague, who's on Zoom if we have questions. And Brian Ginter in the back here with Consor, formerly Murray Smith, who helped with the engineering. So I've got a team of folks here. Hopefully we can address any concerns you have. And we will roll. Here's our agenda for this evening. I hope to just briefly touch on what a master plan is to set the stage for the conversation. I'll roll into an overview of the 2023 Plan Update that we have before you for consideration. I'll pass it over to Zach for water rate and SDC updates and the methodology and the process and how we got there and what is being proposed. Then I'll kick it over to Erin. She can discuss the comp plan updates and the Plan Commission meeting that we held earlier. And then I'll recap some of the public engagement we had with the online open house process recently. And then open it up for questions and discussion. So what's a master plan briefly? Required by law, plans for 20 year planning horizon typically. It looks at the existing system, how it's functioning, what we have, what we need to improve on. It looks at what future growth we're expected to have so we can be ready for that. It identifies capital projects so we know how to strategically invest in the water system. And it determines how we can pay for all that. That's all rather wonky, but I think behind all of this, water is one of the most important services we deliver. It's crucial for life, economy, well being, all our residents, everyone depends on it. We take that very seriously. And having a lot of smart minds participate and make sure we're making well informed and strategic decisions in the Water Master Plan and the water system is really important. This is our roadmap to do that. So this is going to set us up really well to continue to make really good and strategic investments in the water system. So what's in the plan? I broke it up into four sections. This is kind of how the plan was was grouped and it moves from our current situation, where we're at today, what what we're experiencing, what we have issues with, what we have, what we're planning for, what we think is going to happen in the future, particularly around Basalt Creek. But we have some infill development opportunities as well. I put a planning bucket. There's a lot of plans that roll up into the plan, so I'll just highlight those briefly. And then funding and rates, which Zach will cover. So current situation. Last updated the plan in 2013, not quite 20 years ago, but we've seen some change in both demands and perspective development. And so it seemed very timely for us to take another fresh look at this. We buy water from Portland. That's consideration and how we planned for this. We planned to continue to buy water from Portland. So baking that into the plan and understanding the costs and the infrastructure needs to do that were crucial for this. Just a glimpse of what we're looking at today, we're averaging about four and a half million gallons a day on average over the course of the year. And that can jump up to 8.3 in the summer. Typically irrigation drives that up, but just that big swing and we need to plan for those peak days, even if they're not super frequent. We have a good mix here. As you know, we have a good robust tax base. About half of that is commercial industrial. That's unique and I think worth pointing out, it's it's a pretty cool thing that we have here in the city. And in general, we just look at all the assets and how they're functioning. So on the right hand side, there's some snips from the online open house that just show how many pipes, 140 miles of pipes, how many pumps, tanks, all of that. I think a lot behind the scenes that not everybody recognizes. And so we, and we do an analysis on all that to see what do we need to do, what's not functioning properly today, what needs to be built out. And that gives us a really good baseline to then look at what is coming in the future. Future needs are primarily driven by, I mean, what we look at there is demands and growth. And so the slide here pretty, pretty well focuses on expected water demand increases. At build out, which is what we expect to see when all developable land is developed. So they rule out things like floodplain or things that have very steep inclines that aren't likely to be developed. They include things like Basalt Creek Southwest Industrial Area. We look at what we expect to happen, given trends and what we would anticipate. And we see our average demand going up a little bit, about 1.3 million gallons a day. So I mean, it's a pretty big increase for us. But our peak demands, that max stay right there, that's what you see. That's a pretty big swing as well. It has us almost doubling in the summer. So that peak demand, even if it's for a couple of days or a couple of hours, is what we have to plan for. And so you'll see some of that in the CIP projects and the planning, but that is a pretty interesting thing, I think. And as I discussed, increased summer demands, being able to meet those routinely and doing that without disruptions is important. Increased resiliency is something that the council has prioritized. Staff is definitely interested in, and the community has continued to remind us is very important to them as well. That is baked throughout this plan. Proactive repair and replacement, we don't want to be caught off guard. We want to get ahead of things. It's more affordable that way and much easier to manage. So that is a foundational element of this plan that we have considered. And we want to make sure a new development is able to occur and that its funding is available for it to happen. So planning for the plan, the plan has a bunch of smaller planning documents that roll up into it. Emergency Water Plan. That looks at how we will distribute water around the community during an emergency. So we held workshops with regional stakeholders, county cert, fire department, community members, businesses, and just looked at where strategically around the city we would want to distribute water, what improvements we would need to make that happen. And that was included in the final recommendation for our CIP projects to make sure that we can have some good distribution points. The water supply strategy was the analysis that we went through to confirm Portland was the good long term source for us, both financially from source water quality and from council and public's desire. Those two plans were pretty heavy in the public engagement realm. And there was robust engagement outreach for each of those, those happened over the course of a couple of years. This planning process kicked off in about 2017. And so those earlier plans were well on the legwork that occurred earlier in the process. Conservation Plan is mentioned in here. I will admit it is not very robust. It essentially says we need to develop one in coordination with Portland and that should jive with our new water purchasing contract. So it acknowledges the need, it identifies that staff should work on it, but it kind of punts that to be its own document coordinated with our, with the city of Portland and the new contract. Seismic hazards and evaluation is a very technical document. I don't understand at all, but some engineers went through our city and said, here's what will break when the earth shakes very hard. And we are planning for how to prevent loss of water from the system and how to get back online as quickly as possible. And then that all rolls into the capital improvement plan. What are we going to actually do to be ready for all this and remain prepared? There are, I believe, 54 projects, so I will not. Sure. Yeah.
As far as back on the first slide, when you were talking about the conservation plan and to develop one in the future in alignment with Portland's, can you just tell me a little bit more about what that means? Like what Portland's? Does Portland have a conservation plan?
They do. Portland does and we do. Just acknowledging, being that we buy water from Portland, we want to try to align ourselves where possible. And we have a new water purchasing contract, which has different incentives and financial ramifications for how we use water. So being mindful of both what Portland's doing as our source and our provider and what our contract requires us to do or incentivizes us to do. So we're not, we just want to make sure we have a really holistic look at the best way to conserve water.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. As I was saying, I think there's 54 projects in total. I will not drone through all of them. But some of the more exciting, larger, early projects that I wanted to highlight are the Boons Ferry Road Water Main Replacement that is underway and happening quickly, that both serves the Basalt Creek Autumn Sunrise Development, so crucial for that to occur. And it addressed a deficiency that we currently have in our system during the summer with peak demands. So that was one of those deficiencies that we identified in the in the existing system and then were able to bundle that with a development project. B level storage and pumping, another storage tank in B level and another pump up to sea level, which would be the most southern part of town are recommended in the plan at the ASR site. That'll provide us with redundant storage and redundant pumping, something we could definitely use. And it will support all that southern development that we will see. Seismic seismic improvements, they're just scattered throughout the system, but looking at ways we can keep the water we have on hand after an earthquake and ways we can get the distribution system back online as quickly as possible. So there's a backbone of transmission pipes that we have looked at from Old Village insight through the city that we want to invest in first as a priority. And then looking at ways we can keep water in the storage tanks, get water out of our ASR well, that type of stuff. But definitely a theme throughout all of the projects. Upgrade, repair and replace existing infrastructure. As the asset manager here, this is a big one for me. I like to be on top of that stuff. So looking at ways we can proactively replace assets, doing asset condition and assessments and planning for that. And so we do have a line in the CIP for funding for those proactive pipe replacements. And then the sea level, sea level pump station generator. It's a small one, but we know that area of town has power outages in the Norwood area. Currently, we have a mobile trend, mobile generator that we pull up and back and forth and turn on and off and take some staff intervention. So we're going to put something permanent up there that's automatic. It'll make it much more seamless, require no human intervention to get the power back on and continue pumping. So it's a small project, but it's going to have a big impact.
Can I, I'm gonna ask a question.
Please.
Seismic improvements, I know this is a little bit off topic. But what's the status of the Washington County Supply Line? Cause that's, I know it's all does Portland's pipe.
It's a big question.
That's a state Portland's pipe. We don't control it, but that's.
We don't control it. There's a shared ownership agreement. It is definitely vulnerable from my understanding. It's like a yes and kind of a step that has to be done with Portland, TVWD, Raleigh are all shared owners. We need a other process for that.
So is that part of the, is that included in the water contract?
We are part of, yeah, that's part of our water contract negotiations.
That's all I wanted to know, because they've been talking about years that's supposed to be improved and doesn't.
It's a lingering risk we're working on mitigating.
That pipe breaks, there ain't no water.
Yes, sir. Yes, that's the, that's where we're looking to address it at. That's got the right stakeholders at the table. This is specifically within our boundary of this planning. But good question. Water rates and STCs. There's a clicker, sir.
Thanks. Okay, so once again, I'm Zach Hazel with FCS Group. I did the rate and SDC analysis. And I also have John Gilarducci, the Managing Principal, in case there's any more detailed strategic questions, he can answer those. So start with the water rates, which is, this is probably review for all of you, but we'll just give you some basics of utility rate making here. So utility rates have to be set only to provide the cost of service and achieving some financial goals. There are two primary types of costs here. In the dark blue color, you have your operating costs in that bar graph there. And those generally rise steadily over the years, although with Portland Water Bureau purchasing costs, not not always so steadily. There are also capital costs in that that gray color and those kind of bounce around years to year, depending on what needs to be built. Here is the capital improvement pan plan through fiscal year 2032. That's the rate setting period that we're looking at for today. We are escalated costs, looking at $50.3 million in those 10 years. You can see some of the costs for some of those big projects there, the B level transmission upsizing for 11.8 million. A couple of projects there for 6.8 and 6.7 million. You can see that we have some big costs already right away in the first three years and we're going to need to make sure that our rates can accommodate that. This, this graph does a pretty good job of summarizing all of the rate work that you can read about in our report. So there are two types of data being shown here. The bars are the costs that the utility is facing and the lines cutting across the bars are the revenues. So starting with the costs, I'll explain each element of this graph. The dark blue at the very bottom, those are your cash operating expenses, not inclusive of the water purchase costs, which are shown in the next bar above in the bright blue. You can see that stays steady until 2027 and then it makes a big jump. And that similar jump occurs again in fiscal year 2030. And we need to start planning for those jumps in water purchase costs. Otherwise, the rate increases would be even more dramatic in those years. After the water purchase costs, the next bar that you can very faintly see, if you look closely, is the green existing debt service. That kind of starts to fade out over the planning period. And then in pink is the new debt service that is related to revenue bonds that we've assumed that you'll issue to help fund the capital program. And then lastly, the last bar that you see here is the yellow bar at the top for rate funded capital. That's what you're setting aside each year for, from your rate revenues to help build capital projects. You also have your existing reserves, which are not shown in this graph. This is the annual graph here. And then going to the lines, you can see the line that cuts across all the bars is your rate revenues at existing rates. And what you can see here is that we have a little bit of rate funded capital in fiscal year 2023 just passed. Pretty much immediately in fiscal year 2024, we start to run into issues. We don't, we wouldn't have any rate funded capital in that year without an increase. And then that those issues only get worse, especially once we see those water purchasing costs occur in 2027. Finally, the last line at the top here, the dash line is the rate revenues with rate increases. The rate increases are shown in the numbers above that. So we start at 12%, which continues all the way through fiscal year 2030. And then after that, we've kind of achieved what we needed to to help fund the additional water purchasing costs. And then we can drop back to more inflationary level rate increases. Here is, here are those rate increases applied to your current rate schedule. You can see 12% all the way through 2030 and then four and a quarter after that. And then lastly, here are some water bill comparisons for a typical single family bill. We're assuming eight CCF of usage. You can see that even though 12% is a high percentage increase in terms of dollar amounts to the typical single family residence, Twelton is still at the bottom of the pack with relative to these other jurisdictions. So still doing very well, even with that 12% increase.
Can I jump in? The proposed and current, the proposed rate increase was adopted on June 26th. So that is now our current. So just, those are a little updated.
Thanks, Nick. All right, assuming there's no questions on rates, the next discussion is about the STCs. Okay, so Oregon law provides very specific rules for how to calculate STCs. There are two components, the reimbursement fee and the improvement fee. They make up the full system development charge. The reimbursement fee looks at the eligible value of the available capacity that you already have. And we are charging reimbursement fee to make sure that new development helps to pay for what's already available to them in your system. The improvement fee looks forward at the project lists and in this case through 2040 and and figures out the eligible cost of those capacity expanding projects to make sure that development is helping pay for those projects that are needed to serve them. So those two elements, once again, make the system development charge. And by the way, the cost of those are divided by the expected growth in system demand through 2040. Here are your current STCs, starting with the 5/8 inch meter at the very top here, the smallest meter you install. The charge is $5,566. For every additional meter, of course, they have a higher maximum demand. And so they get a higher share of the SDC costs and that's why the SDC increases as you get to the larger meter sizes.
Can you give an example of what, like what, what? I'm assuming it's a manufacturing industrial would have 10 inch versus what's your normal house have?
That would be your 5A spy three quarter. So the the lowest cost one would be a typical single family home.
And what about a 10? So that looks like the, so a house is at the lowest level, the 5/8 by three and a quarter.
Yes.
So 10 inches was like a manufacturer, somebody obviously a heavy water user.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Large industrial.
Okay, what sports most of our, what's the average industrial in Twelton? Is it all over the place?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
I just, it's wondering, but so yeah, pretty much every most residential homes are the personal.
At that 5566, yeah. And that eight, yeah, yes, yeah, sorry. I'm going somewhere else. Yes, that's the typical single family home impact.
An apartment has one water meter for the whole complex, right?
Typically, yeah, or maybe, you know, three or four, depending on how it was developed, but they would have a larger size.
Okay.
Like the hospital is like a four inch, a four inch, right? So I mean, even that big.
I see Ryan nodding. Oh, perfect. SEPA was a four inch. And Lamb is a six inch. SEPA, the Community Partners for Affordable Housing Development, is a four inch proposed meter and Lamb Industrial six? Six inch, at least one of their meters. They have more than one.
Play out SEPA's 114, 115 apartments. Right?
All right, so here are the things we looked at when calculating your. All right, so um here are the things we looked at when calculating your STCs. Uh, like I mentioned, we looked at your growth that come, came from the water master plan through twenty forty. Uh, we looked at the cost of those capital projects and made sure to discount them to just the capacity increasing portion of those uh projects um for inclusion in the SDC. And then we looked at the existing capacity and the original cost for those assets. Um, talking to Brian, um, we identified capacity in the storage, pumping and transmission uh functions. Um, so putting all of these pieces together, we calculated the maximum defensible SDC, which is an important. Uh, set of words there. This is the maximum you could charge. It's not, you're not obligated to charge it. We charge anything up to the maximum charge I'm about to show you. So here are the proposed STCs based on those uh pieces of data I just talked about. Uh, now you can see the starting SDC for the smallest meter is eight thousand two hundred ninety dollars. And theoretically, if you built a, if you installed a ten inch meter, we go all the way up to nine hundred fifty-three thousand. And then this might help, uh, point of comparison here. Um, at the bottom, Twelton Current, and I believe Nick, that these, those are indeed current uh SDCs. Uh, this is for a single family residence, five eighth inch meter, you can see five thousand five hundred sixty-six. And then bold in the middle is the proposed maximum charge. Um, even if you uh took the maximum SDC, um you would still be in the middle of the pack relatively these comparable jurisdictions and um. Yeah, so you're in a good place either way. And that's it.
Anything before I pass it over to Aaron?
I shook my head, but. That's a Brooks.
So um, I guess my question is, when, when we look at the bar graph. And we see use going up and costs going up, I know that there's capital expenses. But when we look at use expenses, um. How come if there's going to be more users, the, the line's flat rather than? The people that are going to be paying their water bills or um whether they're residential or commercial? Does that make sense what I asked?
I think so, yeah. So um you were talking about how the solid line cut across the uh.
Is flat, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So first off, I'll point out that the Portland Water Bureau uh water purchase costs, those are increasing not really as a. I mean, partly as a function of the demand increasing, but also as a co- uh, they're building a big project and. Uh, so the costs are just going up per CCF anyway. Um. Secondly, we don't really, we don't really, we look at the demand uh over the full twenty forty uh planning period and we escalate it. On an, an average basis. So we're not, we're not really looking at pricing out every unit of water in every single year. So we're just looking at the average growth of about one percent in terms of uh water usage.
Thank you.
That's first of print.
I just want an explanation of why Portland is so cheap. They're at the bottom of your list there.
I was not able to find an explanation before this meeting. I, I have some sus- suspicions, but I do not know the answer. I was not able to find the answer.
That's why they still have wooden pipes.
Plus, we don't, we don't know what these other jurisdictions are doing, so they, they might all be going up.
Okay, if we're ready to move on, as part of the water master plan update, we're also looking at amending some of our planning documents under PTA. Which is Plan Text Amendment and PMA, which is Plan Map Amendment twenty-three dash zero 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 two. Oops. Go forward, not backwards. Um. So specifically, we're looking to update the comprehensive plan to incorporate the water master plan as a supporting document. And with chapter nine, we're going to update it to um accommodate the new findings from this water master plan. Um, and it also identified three goals, which I'll talk about a little bit more on this next slide. And we're also looking at updating our development code, chapter seventy-four, to update a dated reference to our comprehensive plan. So as I mentioned, uh, the water master plan has expanded goals and has identified three different goals. Our current comprehensive plan only has one goal, but it kind of bundles up many of these ideas into one goal. So we wanted to be clean and to respect what was identified in the water master plan and break it up into three goals. And with these new goals, we've also kind of rearranged and updated our policies to align and support these new goals. So you'll now find that we have ten policies, whereas before I believe we had six policies. And we're updating um comprehensive plan map nine-one. So you'll see that this is the existing map. And this is what we're proposing. So. As we've studied the impacts to the salt creek, you'll notice that the pressure zones have changed slightly. And we are also um updating the pipe improvements to reflect what's happening. On the ground right now as Autumn Sunrise comes online. And through. Um. The findings and analysis, which I believe is actually been updated to exhibit three. You'll find that we have analysis and findings to meet statewide planning goals, the Oregon administrative rules and the Twelton Development Code. And we've also included information under exhibit five to show that we're meeting our public noticing requirements by the state. And I don't know if, would you like to come up here? I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Thompson to talk about the planning commission recommendation.
Um, okay, they brought this before us. Um, we just had some similar discussions that you guys are having about the rate increase and the sources of the water. Um, a lot of discussions about um emergency preparedness and kind of where they're standing and some of the. Work that was going to be done there to make sure that we could get water in case of emergency. I think a lot of us learned a lot of things too. Um, as they brought it forward, um. After all those questions, everybody agreed that it all looked clean to us and accurate. Um, we did think about the rates, of course, I think is a, the difficult part, but I think given the fact that. You know, it's from Portland, it doesn't seem like there's other options that seem more viable financially. So we all approved unanimously the recommendation to adopt the master plan and felt good about it. Any questions?
That's a crap.
It's not for you.
Yeah.
So when I was looking through the policies, um. Um, under goal nine point two, policy nine point two-two, it's supply development and diversification. It says plan for the development of additional water sources, so that kind of. I guess I want a little more elaboration because you know, we have to go to the voters if we want anything but bowl run water here. And so I just wondered what was meant by that.
Um, so what's been identified through this planning process is the potential risk of our water source being fifty miles away through the pipeline. May or be described as being vulnerable. And so one of the things that we have heard consistently through this planning process is having a backup plan is important. And so I think the intention there is to try to understand what viable backup options we have. We're committed to Portland, we're negotiating a third year contract. That is something we are fully in on. But what do we do if that gets disrupted? And that might not be an earthquake, that could be pipe maintenance, that could be a construction accident. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into that. So that, I believe, is what's being captured there.
Right. So I think we're just looking to memorialize that there's more work to be done, but we've highlighted that this is identified in the water master plan and it's something that the city recognizes.
That makes sense. That's part of resilience.
Yeah.
System. Great, thank you.
It's just to note, the term amendment is not that it has to come from both, both mountains.
Both.
Both, both runs. It can't come from the Willa, it can't come from the.
Oh.
Over well.
Yeah, it could be, as long as it's not the Willa, if we have an emergency, we need to get water out of the pot, we can't.
So trying to figure out what all that could look like for us, what our best option is to just have some backup plan.
To limit. Right. Back to you, Aaron.
All right, and I believe that was my last slide, so turn it over to public engagement.
Thanks. And we got a special guest out of it. I will say the plan commission conversation was really robust. Uh, it was really nice. There was a lot of really good questions. It was fun. All right, public engagement. Uh, the main component of this was an online open house. So we put together kind of a narrative story map, if you will. As a little bit more rudimentary than that, but essentially trying to walk folks through. What the planning process entails, how we got here, what we're looking to include and how we're looking to pay for it. And then along the way, gathering feedback from folks about. Are there values there? Or do we have the right prioritizations and projects and priorities? How does the funding feel? Um, and we got really decent response on that, which was nice and a lot of meaningful feedback and comments. Um, I put on the sides how we advertise these things. So for the online open house, we sent postcards to all the addresses in the city. So everyone, all the apartments, industrial, commercial users. Um, shared it out through the chamber and some of our other regional partners or city partners. Um, social media, website, newsletter, Twelton Life, and then direct emails to any random group that we knew had interest or might have impacts or might have thoughts. So we really tried to cast a wide net because this does really impact the entire community. And then for the SDC outreach. Uh, a little bit more formalized because we have legal requirements. So there's some newspaper notifications. And then there's a requirement to send it out to a, I believe it's called an interested parties list. But I ended up doing is just having our building folks pull us, anyone who has pulled permits that might be impacted by SDC increases, which wound up being almost twenty-one hundred people. And send it to everyone, just so we made sure we didn't miss anybody. Uh, so we got a really good netcast. And we got some key takeaways. People really understand their water system. They know where it comes from. They know that our water is historically affordable. They like bowl run. I mean, there was a lot of good, meaningful feedback. Folks are pretty educated on this. So that was really nice because they came in with a good base level. And I think that provided some really substantial comments for us. Resiliency and redundancy are important. We heard a lot of comments around just natural disaster, emergency preparation in general, and then less so, but comments around the distance from our source. So people are plugged in and then they know what that means if something were to happen. The proposed rates feel reasonable. I use the word reasonable. Um, most of the residents identified as like, yes, happy to pay for this or customers, I should say. Um, happy to pay for this. We believe in the things you're prioritizing in or like, don't love it, but I get it. And I think it's a good investment. So it was really nice to see, it was about seventy, a little over seventy percent of people fell into those two positive categories of like, we support this in some fashion. Um, I will know that there was a smaller section that said this is difficult to pay for. So I think there's some, some stuff to do there. But um overall, I, I was pleasantly surprised with how receptive folks were once they understood what we were paying for. Support for Portland. Um, yeah, lots of comments about just continue to buy water from Portland. Bowl run is awesome, as you all have heard and echoed. So that was just good and reaffirming our choice to stick that out and continue our contract negotiations. And then to the earlier questions, backup source is, is something that folks have identified. So I feel like a lot of that was captured in the plan. I felt like that represented the goals you saw uh from Aaron's slides, the priorities we included in the CIP. So that was pretty affirming. And then to see the general um support or understanding of the financial aspects to pay for those things was, was good. I put some quotes up here. I won't read them all to you. Um, they were some of the ones I thought were a little bit more representative of the, the, the majority of the quotes I saw or more pointed. Um, but. People seemed, once it was explained to them, to feel like it was reasonable. They were supportive. It seemed to represent what we had been hearing from the community. So it was good affirmation. Uh, third one down was a good back pat for all the folks on the team that just put the online hope, open house together and all the engagement materials. And then you can see at the bottom, just some concerns around redundancy. So action items, since this was a wondery uh presentation with a lot of things and some special guests. We've got two ordinances for you. One adopts the master plan and the comp plan amendments. The other one adopts the new SDC methodology that Zach highlighted and the new SDC rates. So that maximum allowable increase or defensible increase, I think is the right term. Um, and then I just included rates on here because it's part of the conversation, but there is no action because that initial first year increase was adopted on June twenty-sixth. And then as we do every year in budgeting, that will be reassessed, but um that forecast is part of the plan. So I wanted to identify. All right. Anything we haven't addressed yet?
Uh, since it's a public hearing, I'm going to do public testimony first and.
Oh, yeah.
Questions.
Absolutely.
Because we always forget this part about the public hearings sometimes. Uh, so with that, so we have two ordinances tonight, uh fourteen seventy-six dash twenty-three. Which amends a comprehensive plan and fourteen seventy-seven dash twenty-three, which adopts the SDC methodology and rates. Uh, so I'm asking anybody in Zoom or in the meeting here right now, who would like to testify in support of these two ordinances? Do I have anyone? Anyone in Zoom? Okay, uh, the opposite side of the table, do we have anyone in Zoom or at this meeting tonight? Who would like to testify uh in opposition of these uh either ordinance? Still just to consult, all right. With that, okay, that uh includes the public comment part of this. Counselor Sacco, questions?
Um, I have a question about the public engagement um and the comments received. How many people approximately responded and was the outreach in Spanish as well?
Yeah, everything was available in Spanish. Um, the open house was translated. All the materials we put out were bilingual. We had about three hundred or so unique visitors. Um, the amount of time folks stayed on dropped off the further through the process they got, but.
Other quick, that's what I'm gonna tell us.
So I don't know if this is the right form, but I want to ask, um, was there any outreach done to individual homeowners on what they can do to eat, to save water? Because the biggest spike, if I'm correct, based on what you said, is irrigation is the biggest waster. So Twelton Valley Water, Portland Water Bureau, Hillsborough Water, Clackamas, where they all offer rebates to individual homeowners. Then install a weather's smart controller from the sprinkler heads, the controllers. I'm under, understand that program, first come, first served, money runs out. Um, since we are going to be updating our water plant, I would like to include, if possible, with the support of the council. To maybe add some dollars to allow more homeowners to qualify for that rebate, since irrigation is the biggest, one of the biggest wastes of water. We've all seen water running when it's raining all the time. It happens uh as a season unfolds in the, in the spring and as it goes away in the, in the fall time. People are wondering along when it's raining sometimes. If they had a sensor, a rebate, or even that education around that, um, that can also save, save the, the usage of water to our city in the, considerably. So has there been any work done around that um to make that project more robust?
We currently offer no rebates. I would um envision that fitting very well in the water conservation plan and then spinning up a program potentially, if that was council's desire to help reduce. Both what you're describing as well as all the other efficiency potential.
Uh, we get our water from the Portland Water Bureau and they themselves do offer rebates themselves. So because of that, is Twelton eligible?
We would have to do our own program. That's for Portland retail customers only.
Okay. So this probably will be a good time to introduce an idea for us, since we are going to be asking for a rate increase. It would be appropriate for us all to educate our population here in Twelton, how to use less water in their individual yards for conservation. I think it also plays to our sys- system sustainability for our city. Um, to add a, a robust budget for that potentially. Sure, in the beginning, it can begin with small, but I, I would see this to be one that would eventually grow with education and resources.
Absolutely, totally agree. I will acknowledge that we are part of the water consortium, the regional water providers consortium. Um, and we do distribute outreach engagement materials for water conservation practices. So there's a weekly number for how many inches to water. That's more of a manual thing. There's some efficiency things that we uh, we distribute. So we do do some of that work. I totally agree it could be improved upon. So I'm not dissenting on that at all. I just wanted to highlight, there is a little bit going on. Uh, plenty of room for opportunity there.
Yes, I do tap into that information and share it with HOAs. Um. But I guess if this is the time to, I, I don't know when we'll vote on this, but I think um we should consider at least some ideas for this. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Because uh. Going back to my youngster days on council, I remember Council Truax bringing up. The idea of rebates on the, you know, the dual button toilets, the low usage toilets. And how we didn't have that kind of rebate program either. So like, in addition, like the sprinkler thing, all those kind of ideas. Of yeah, first come, first served discounts on our voucher for that toilet, you know, that uses less water would be a good idea.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm going to add to that um in that group of consideration, I would say the people is it background tab program? Because that's people that are taking their lungs out and they're planting native plants. So I would think that would be a really helpful way to conserve water.
Yeah, thank you. I agree.
Other questions? Officer Brooks?
Well, I'm just going to piggyback on all those things that you said, and I think that um it's really good for our residential community, but also thinking of it. He is around commercial since it looks like it's fifty fifty and there's a lot of use there. Um, and just thinking about different ways to water and different ways to um. Have your entrance way look.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Liberation motions.
Well, just a second. So, so just to uh kind of put a bow on that, the. We, we hear your comments on the conservation program, but um this ordinance does not include the conservation program, but we will.
Separate.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Yep.
Thanks, Sherilyn.
Yeah, we have to, we have to pass both ordinances or adopt both. Right, so there's ordinance fourteen seventy-six dash twenty-three, which amends a comprehensive plan. And there's ordinance fourteen seventy-seven dash twenty-three, which adopts the SDC methodology and rate. We have to adopt both of those as this first and second readings, yep, all that good stuff.
I motion that we have a first reading of ordinance fourteen seventy-six dash twenty-three by title only. Second.
I have a motion and a second for first reading by title only of ordinance one four seven six dash twenty-three. Any discussions on those motions? Alright, uh, Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Also Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Ordinance one four seven six dash two-three and ordinance relating to the twenty twenty-three Water Master Plan. Amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Nine and Map Nine dash one. Amending Twalton Development Code, Chapter Seventy-four. PTA twenty-three dash zero zero two and PMA twenty-three dash zero zero two.
I move that we, um, have a second reading of ordinance one four seven six dash twenty-three by title only. Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading by title only of ordinance one four seven six dash twenty-three. Any discussions on those motions? I'll flip it around. Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Also Brooks?
Aye.
Also President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote all aye also.
Ordinance one four seven six dash two-three and ordinance relating to the twenty twenty-three Water Master Plan, amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Nine and Map Nine dash one. I would never make a good auctioneer. Uh, amending Twalton Development Code, Chapter Seventy-four, PTA twenty-three dash zero zero two and PMA twenty-three dash zero 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 two.
I motion that we adopt ordinance one four seven six dash twenty-three. Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance one four seven six dash two-three. Any discussions on those motions? Counsel Gonzalez?
I, I.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
That's President Pratt?
Aye.
And I vote aye also, it's unanimous, it's adopted. Next.
I motion that, um, we have a reading by title only, uh, a first reading by title only of ordinance one four two seven dash two-three.
No, one four seven seven.
One four seven seven dash two-three, can't read my own handwriting. Second.
I have a motion and a second for first reading by title only of ordinance one four seven seven dash twenty-three. Any discussions on the motions? Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
That's President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Ordinance one four seven seven dash two-three and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three Water System Development Charge Methodology. Amending Twalton Municipal Code, Chapter Two dash zero-six and updating water SDC amounts.
I motion for a second reading of ordinance one four seven seven dash twenty-three by title only. Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading of ordinance one four seven seven two-three, uh, by title only. Any discussion on that motion? Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Ordinance number one four seven seven dash two-three and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three Water System Development Charge Methodology. Amending Twalton Municipal Code, Chapter Two dash zero-six and updating water SDC amounts.
I motion that we adopt ordinance one four seven seven dash twenty-three. Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance one four seven seven dash twenty-three. Any discussions on the motions? Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is adopted, it's unanimous, alright. Thank you all.
Thanks.
That's a lot of talk. Alright, that brings us to items removed for consent. Uh, we had no items removed from consent. That brings us now to council communications and, uh, the very patient Mr. Dragonhold and pickleball folks, we finally got to your subject. Uh, so the request was made, um, to possibly, to schedule a work session in the future. Uh, to look at, uh, their requests about how it can be possible to get those pickleball courts at the garages. In order for that to happen, we would have to have four votes from the council to direct, uh, Sherilyn to schedule a future work session to discuss it. And schedule it with staff, do we have four votes for that? Yeah. Done.
Alright, so we will schedule a work session where we will come back and talk to you about what would, it would entail. The process for, um, allowing pickleball in that zone. Um, along with that, we will bring back a list of, uh, and let you have a discussion about prioritization of the planning department's work plan.
Mm-hmm.
So, so you can see where that fits in.
Right.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you, um, the pipeline for this is. I know exactly, weeks, months for the planning.
To come back for a work, in a work session?
Yes.
Um, we could probably come back in maybe August or the first part of September. We're in July now. I'm looking at Steve.
I'm only.
He's not making eye contact.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
I'm only asking just because we know that you guys have been in support of this and, and it's not that we're not wanting to do this for you, there's just been, uh, a huge list of other priorities in the council. And, and we are sensitive to your needs as well, so I just wanted to reassure you of that.
Thank you very much.
So.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, with that, are there any other council communications? That's from President Pratt.
I just wanna point out that it's summer and we have a lot of events going on in our city. And tomorrow's a science spectacular for elementary school kids at the library plaza at one o'clock. Wednesday is our lunchtime concert series at the, um, Lake of the Commons from twelve to one with Lisa Mann. And, uh, Saturday, the twenty-second of July is Viva Twalton, and it looks like they still need volunteers, so. If you'd like, um, I found the easiest way to find it is just type in Viva Twalton and it pops right up, so.
Anything else?
I just wanna say in early, I hear you have a big birthday coming on mayor, and I just wanna say a early happy birthday and acknowledge that. Thank you for your service.
I moved to adjourn.
I thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, it's unanimous, thank you everyone, have a very good night.
Recording.